Testing, can you hear me? Good evening, everyone. It's six thirty Thursday, April fifteenth. Welcome to the council meeting for the village of Royal Palm Beach. Could everyone stand, please, so we can have the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane, how are you this evening?
Yes, Mayor.
Here we are on the fifteenth.
Yes, we are.
It's the fourth month halfway over of the new year, which just happened like yesterday. Anyway, Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present this evening.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And for the public, I'd just like to announce the methodology to participate in the meeting this evening. Public may participate in person here at the village hall. We will adhere to CDC requirements for distance seating and wearing of mask. You may participate online with a computer, a tablet, or smartphone remotely by joining the go-to webinar from your computer, tablet, or smartphone. To get this information for getting online, as well as getting online via telephone, please go to www.royalpalmbeach.com/webmeetings. And with that, we'll start out with reports. Normally, I would give a report on the third Thursday of the month on what happened at the transportation planning agency's meeting this morning. I was not able to attend, so I'm going to ask Mr. Councilman, Mayor, if he wants to make any reports on anything that happened at that meeting of significance.
Yeah, I can do a real quick overview of it. First of all, the only action that we really had to vote on was one that was actually the Fourth Amendment to that five-year plan that we have. That's called the Transportation Improvement Plan. And that wasn't so noteworthy as much as the fact that this is the first time that we've actually been able to get a unanimous vote on an amendment to that plan, because that plan has in it State Road Seven extension. And for each of those representatives from West Palm Beach or our county commissioner who has the representation of that area, usually turns out to be a no vote, almost no matter what the amendment might be. The amendment was not all that significant. It was a funding change and a bit of a schedule change. But like I said, the most significant thing was we were able to get unanimous yes votes across the board. So that was noteworthy.
Certainly was.
History-making, among other things. One other thing I want to share with everybody, and I'll pass these around, is that the TPA is always working to make clear what it is that they, the organization does and is responsible for. And they put together an infographic flyer, which is very informative, and moves from the vision and mission statement to specifics about the amount of money that's involved, where the money comes from, and how the money is applied to provide a transportation network that meets the vision of a safe, efficient, and connected multimodal transportation system. So this is available online, but it's also available, obviously, through TPA for anyone who says, well, just exactly what does the TPA do? So I'll get it.
You know what this reminds me of? Remember the Colonel Packet?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. In your hip pocket, exactly. So that was distributed as well. And I think that probably is about... Oh, one other thing I did want to mention is, as part of the consent agenda, we have filled the vacancy now for Royal Palm Beach.
So we now have a rep on the...
Advisory council. And so Mark Forrest, retired FBI L.A. theorist, now are representative on that. That's good. That's it on that.
You want to finish your report since you're up?
Sure. Education Advisory Board met last Saturday. We spent the better part of the day interviewing seventeen applicants for this year's ten village scholarships. And like every year, it's always amazing to listen to these young adults talk about their view of the future. And actually, a couple of them offered the opportunity to say anything else to the board that you would like to, some insight that I classify as wisdom at a young age. This one young man, who was a member of student council, said that he joined the council primarily to see what he could do to help the school and students in the school dealing with issues and that type of stuff. And he said, for the most part, it's been a wonderful experience. But he did learn one thing, that there are times and situations where, no matter how much you may want to help, your help may not be wanted. And I thought...
That's a lesson learned.
He said it in the most positive way. It just says an acceptance of a reality, and so good for him. So we've... The board actually did the selection, and they came up finally unanimously in support of ten recommendations for the recipients of the scholarship. And we'll get the results of their recommendations and award the scholarships on May the twentieth, our next regular council meeting. That's coming up, and...
Just a quick question. You said there were seventeen candidates. Is that number about what it normally is, or is it different because of the COVID environment?
It was much, much less. I mean, we've had as many as seventy, I would think, right?
Wow, that is a big...
And it was down a lot, but I don't know if anyone else has had any experience with other scholarships, but it seems like that's a general trend and one of the effects of the pandemic. So we have fewer to work from, but they were great kids again. It was a good thing. And finally, the legislative session is not done yet. Two-thirds are way through. Attacks continue on Home Rule. The good news is that a lot of the efforts undertaken by Florida League of Cities lobbying group have been successful in generating some amendments to soften the blow on some of these. So I asked Keith if he would give us a short summary of some of the key activities that are going on. And again, we have about one-third of the session left. So if you get a chance to tune in on Monday mornings, nine to nine-thirty, get an update on what's happening and also respond to any calls for action, that kind of thing.
Keith, can you do it in two minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so some of the high points. House Bill One is that combating public disorder bill. That's the one that provides a cause of action, a civil cause of action for municipal interference with law enforcement during a riot. And it also allows any member of the governing body, as well as the state attorney of the judicial circuit, to appeal any reduction to a municipal law enforcement agency's budget to the state. That one, it looks like, is headed to the governor's desk. It's passed all three readings on both house floors. So that's not good news, but that's where that one seems to be. Home-based business. Local government may not enact or enforce any ordinance or regulation that regulates home-based business in a manner different from other businesses in the jurisdiction. Possibly, this one has stalled. There hasn't been... It seems like it was temporarily postponed in the House on its second reading. Nothing's happened in a couple of weeks on that one. So that may die a quiet death. We'll see. Sales tax, internet sales tax, that has passed both houses, and that's also on its way to the governor's desk. That would require internet retailers and online marketplace to collect state sales tax on items delivered within Florida. So that one looks like, as I said, is headed for the governor's desk. County and municipal code enforcement Senate Bill Sixty, House Bill Eighty-three, that's the one that would prohibit code enforcement cases based on anonymous complaints, with the exception for health, safety, and welfare violations. That has passed the Senate and is awaiting consideration in the House. That one may also have stalled. We'll have to see. There's still some time left, but it hasn't had any movement in a couple of weeks. House Bill Fifty-five is the building design legislation that would preempt a local government from applying building design, zoning, and land use development regulations. As of today, it has passed all committees in the House, but was postponed on its second reading on the floor. Uncertain how this one's going to move. It may have stalled as well. And those were the five I was reporting on. Hopefully, that was two minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to add to the one about the home-based businesses. That was the one that the lobbying group for Florida League of Cities had an impact on. It was amended to the point where we would be able to regulate pretty much as we currently regulate for noise disturbances, traffic.
It wouldn't affect any of the ordinances we already have.
It really wouldn't have. It was... The amendment was so substantial, it's basically watered well. And you've heard Keith say that it looks like it stalled, so it may be stalled for that reason. Why would we do this at all then?
Okay, good.
Good evening. No report this evening, Mayor.
Good evening. I attended the Business Development Board breakfast, and they had a couple new businesses that have moved into Palm Beach County. So just to see the way businesses that are growing and expanding. So one of them was Exuma Biotech. So of course, that one just was science and the northern part of the county. One of them was AeroClean, which does air purifiers. And they talk about that they're the size of carry-on luggage bags and how they can purify a room in point seven seconds. So... No, the air purifier is the size of a carry-on luggage.
Is this something that was created because of the COVID?
They were using in hospitals before, but now because of this over the last year that they've expanded and now going to office spaces and things like that. So it's interesting to see how businesses pivot. And they say, this is the product that we have and how it can adapt. Exactly. That one. And then the other one is Global Listings, and it's buy or sell real estate around the world. And what was cool about this one is he talked about that soon we're going to be able to use Bitcoin to buy and sell real estate throughout the world. So it's interesting to see how things are shifting.
We'll keep an eye on that one.
Did you buy your Bitcoins yet? Are you stocked up in your bank?
Yeah, I'm getting right on it.
The other thing is it gives the Palm Beach businesses, and they do these out there. What's really cool is that they highlighted Fun Suites, which is a business that relocated into Royal Palm Beach because they outgrew their space in West Palm. So they're over in between the cemetery off of Southern Boulevard over there in the back. So it's really neat that they've expanded and moved to the village. The Solid Waste Authority is doing their Business Power Net. It's a virtual event, but it's how to do business with local government agencies. So you can go to swa.org/ebo. So it's a great way to register and learn how to do your business through the county with government agencies. And what's neat is that you can be a solepreneur and still get a government contract. So it's really... Most people think of the bigger ones, and I don't have the staff, and I'm not...
But these are government contracts related to solid wastes?
No, anything that they'll do through the county. So that they're really working, because it's the business, the equal business opportunity is doing that, and the Office of Equal Business Opportunity through the county, and then Solid Waste Authority has their own as well. So it's a county-wide initiative that they're doing that. And the school district and the city of West Palm Beach is there. And then also Commons Park on Friday nights. They have Concert in the Park continuing on. So thank you.
Ray, you have anything?
No report, Mayor.
Keith, anything else?
Unless you have any questions, nothing further.
Okay. And that'll close our reports. Do we have anyone here who has a petition they want to present to the council?
No petitions, Mayor.
Seeing no petitions, I'm closing the floor to accepting your petitions. Do we have any advance statements from the public on either the non-agenda or the consent agenda?
No statements.
Ray, do you have anyone with their hand raised who wants to make a comment not on the agenda or on the consent agenda?
No, I do not.
I have no cards submitted, and there's no one here who seems to want to make comments not on the agenda or the consent agenda. So I'm going to close public comment on the non-agenda item than the consent agenda. And with that, Diane, can you give us the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Two, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute Second Addendum to Traffic Control Jurisdiction Agreement between the Estates of Royal Palm Beach Homeowners Association, Incorporated, and the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Three, approval of bid award and authorization for the village manager to enter into agreement with Aftermath Disaster Recovery Incorporated, the lowest responsive responsible bidder, in the amount of six hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for debris removal services. Four, approval of a special event permit application by Royal Palm Beach Soccer to host small-sided U-nine under twelve soccer tournament at Catsfield, Friday, April thirtieth, from six P.M. to nine P.M., Saturday, May first, from nine A.M. to four P.M., and Sunday, May second, two thousand twenty-one, from ten A.M. to two P.M. Five, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold a green market and bazaar at Village Hall every Saturday beginning May first through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, from nine A.M. to one P.M. And six, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold concert and food truck expos at Royal Palm Beach Commons Park every Friday night beginning May through July, twenty-twenty-one, from five P.M. to nine P.M.
Okay, thank you. And any comments or questions for members on council? If there are none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that consent agenda was approved five-zero. Our regular agenda, or regular agenda R one, is a public hearing to consider application number two-zero-six-four, SPMAAR, an application by Aldi Inc. in adoption of Resolution Twenty-one-zero-five confirming our council action. The applicant is seeking site plan modification and architectural approval to allow for a one thousand four hundred and sixteen-square-foot expansion to an existing seventeen thousand eighteen-square-foot grocery store and to reconfigure the parking lot layout on Parcels Nine and Ten of the Aldi Park subdivision located on the west side of State Road Seven, approximately a quarter of a mile south of Okeechobee Boulevard. And I guess we're going to hear a presentation from Bradford. But before we do that, this is a quasi-judicial process. So Keith, you have to swear in those participating?
Yes, sir. If you're going to be speaking to the village council, I know Bradford will be presenting. I don't know if we have an applicant present. I don't see them on my screen. If you can let me know, do we have somebody in the room that's more remotely?
We do have three people remotely.
Can I get whoever's going to be testifying? I have Bradford O'Brien from the village. Can I get the names of the other folks who are going to be testifying, please?
A Jason Gunther, a Jordan Ford, and a Dennis Taylor, I believe.
All right, gentlemen, can you all hear me?
Got a feeling they don't hear you.
Yeah. Alfred, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Well, go ahead and swear you in, at least. Do you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony to the village council will be the truth?
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, let's do that again.
Yeah. Can you hear me, Bradford?
Yes, sir, I can.
You swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony to the village council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And then do we have connection with the applicant's representatives who will be testifying yet?
We do. They are self-muted. They need to unmute themselves.
Mayor, while we're waiting for that, I can ask council if there are any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed at this time.
Just the staff.
Jason Gunther unmuted himself.
Mr. Gunther, can you hear me?
He and Jordan are unmuted.
We're unmuted. Hi, this is Jordan Ford with Aldi.
I need to swear you in, sir. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that your testimony to the village council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anybody else?
Here's Jason Gunther. He is unmuted.
Mr. Gunther, can you hear me, sir?
Apparently not going to be speaking.
Okay.
I can move forward if everybody would like to.
We have Bradford sworn in, and we have one of the applicant representatives sworn in, Mayor. We've got our ex parte disclosures. We can proceed at this time at your discretion.
Okay, thanks. Bradford, you're on.
Yes, sir. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
All right, perfect. The applicant is requesting a site plan modification and architectural approval for a one thousand four hundred and sixteen-square-foot expansion to the south side of the building to an existing seventeen thousand and eighteen-square-foot grocery store on Parcels Nine and Ten of the Aldi Park subdivision. The request also includes a reconfiguration of the parking lot to eliminate the access on Aldi Way, eliminate a row of parking spaces, add a row of parking spaces along the north property line, and add a perpendicular landscaped strip in the area where the parking spaces were eliminated. The access point that will be closed is highlighted in blue. The area where the access point will be closed is highlighted in blue and will be replaced with parking spaces and landscaping. Highlighted in blue is where they will be removing a row of parking spaces and adding them along the north property line. The area where the access point will be closed is highlighted in blue and will be replaced with parking spaces and landscaping. Highlighted in blue is where they will be adding the one thousand four hundred and sixteen-square-foot expansion to the south side of the building. In review in this petition, village staff consider conformity with Chapter Twenty-Six of Village's Code of Ordinances, specifically the proposed project meets and requirements for the general commercial zoning district, and therefore request approval of application twenty-sixty-four through the adoption of Resolution Twenty-dash-zero-five. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of five to zero on March twenty-third. And again, we are recommending approval. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor over to you, Ray, and I'll stop sharing my screen.
All right, I do have some questions, but I want to give the applicant a chance to make their presentation. Can you put that screen back up real quick that you just took down? They showed the parking. Here's... I just want to try to understand what I'm looking at. It looks like two means of exiting or entering the parking area will go away, so there'll only be one way in and one way out? Is that correct? Am I looking at that properly?
No, sir. They will be, if you can see my screen now, they will be eliminating this ingress egress point. You can see there's an ingress egress point still showing on the west side of the property, and I'm going to scroll a little bit further. And if you see here, at the bottom of the screen, it will continue to be an ingress... No, I'm sorry. An egress point, not an ingress point, but just a ingress point go south.
I knew there was one there. So that still stays?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I guess this is so that there was a requirement, they had to add additional parking spaces?
There was an additional parking space requirement, and so they reconfigured their parking lot in order to add those spaces along the north property line.
And to do that, how many parking spaces do you pick up by closing that ingress egress location there?
It looks like maybe four. If the applicant could opine?
All right. We'll get back to that, I guess. Does the applicant want to make a presentation?
This is Jordan Ford, Director of Real Estate with Aldi. I'm not sure if Jason Gunther had a presentation or not, but I think he might be having some technical difficulties. But I have nothing further to add. If you happen to answer any questions regarding the remodel and the expansion.
Okay. Let me find out if we have any comments from the public. Were there any advance comments submitted?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay. Do you have anyone with their hand raised out there, Ray, who wants to comment?
No, but Jason does have his microphone unmuted if he wants to comment.
So does that mean he doesn't have his hand raised?
He doesn't have his hand raised, but he does have his microphone unmuted. It is green, but I'm... He's not saying anything. So I guess that's it for their presentation.
I have not received any comment cards from the public on this agenda item, R one. But if anyone from the public would like to comment, that would be the time. Seeing none, I will not close public comment on Agenda Item R one and open up comments from council.
And Bradford, I think you can answer this for me. So the screen that you're showing now with the blue part in there, first of all, for clarification, is the reason for the additional parking spaces because of the expansion of the building, not that they're losing parking spaces by expanding? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. It is due to the fact that they're adding square footage.
Okay. And then the blue area that you have circled now, it shows that it's two-lane parking or double parking on that side? Are they... On the next slide, it is show that you're removing one of those, and you're putting it solely against the wall once it's closed up on the north end?
That's correct. So what they found was is that if they eliminate that northern row of facing parking spaces, they can still maintain two-way traffic along that drive and then put the parking spaces along the north property line and get more parking spaces. So I'm going to go back. You see how short that is compared to how long it can be along the north property line?
Okay, so they're moving just that second row. That'll be... Obviously, there's not enough space then for the two lanes to back up because of that. Is that correct?
Hold that picture for a minute. But you're not showing two lanes on that exit point to State Road Seven? Hold, hold that picture for a minute. You're not showing two lanes on that exit point to State Road seven.
No, we're
Is this a current picture because?
Yes.
No, that's
This is current.
Well, how is that current? When you come out of that exit, there's a traffic light there.
This is Jordan Ford with, this is Jordan Ford with Aldi. That, that's not a current satellite image. You're, you're correct. There is a stoplight that was installed.
That's what I said.
It's current regards to the parking lot configuration for the Aldi parking lot.
Bradford, you understand what I'm saying? If you, currently there are two lanes there. There's a lane for people who are gonna make the right turn. And then there's the left lane who people will make the left turn when they get the light. And there was a light that governs that intersection. So that is not depicted in this picture.
Correct. The aerial is only to show that the driveway. The area is only to show the driveway that's there to be closed.
I'm just making note for the record that the aerial that's being shown is not current and does not show the current configuration. All right, with this intersection. All right, let it be noted. My other question is, we're okay with eliminating that endpoint, entry point and exit point right there?
Yes.
Why?
Because it's very near the intersection and the, and it, to have it further away from the intersection is better. To not have cars trying to get out of the intersection, trying to turn left, crossing the other cars. It's much better not to have an intersection that close to an intersection. So yes, we are
I, I'll tell you that from personal experience, and that's not what I've experienced. But if that's the way we're gonna do it, fine. But I'm just giving you some feedback that that's it is what it is. Okay. Any other questions, comments, members on council?
I'll make one comment. I, I had someone tell me that they were glad to hear that this store was being expanded. They held up as a comparison of the one out on Southern Boulevard.
The new one? The Brian Knight shiny new one?
That one. And they commented on how much wider the aisles are and it's really and they did the comparison and said, so they were delighted to hear that this store is being expanded.
To the applicant, I have a question along that line. Now, the purpose of the expansion is to provide more space for the people who shop there or to provide more product or a combination of both?
This is Jordan Ford with Aldi again. That's correct. We're expanding the store to offer the customers wider aisles. We're also doing a reset and adding some refrigeration, which now this, after the remodel, the store would be able to have the extended product line.
And so I guess this is really good news. It must mean that things are going very well for you there, no?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One last question. Bradford, this is for you. Is, do we need any more handicap spaces because of the expansion or are they sufficient with what they have?
They are sufficient with what they have.
Then all the questions from members on council, then I'll look for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R one was approved five zero. Good luck and what's your timeline to get this done?
Thank you, mayor. We are trying to get it done by the end of the year before the snowbirds come back. So that's the game plan.
Well, good luck with that, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. The next item is, agenda item R two is a public hearing for the second reading in adoption of ordinance number one zero one three, amending chapter six, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordances of the Village of Royal Palm Beach at Article Two, Building Code by repealing sections six dash two-two and six dash two-three in their entirety and re-adopting sections six dash two-two and six dash two-three in order to adopt new amendments to chapter one, Administration of the latest edition of Florida Building Code in accordance with state law along with wind speed line, line map designations. That's a mouthful. So with that, Bradley, you're on.
That would be, be Rob Hill.
I'm sorry.
And this is a second reading and
This is the second reading. That's correct.
This is the second reading and, and we are, the amendment is to incorporate model revisions circulated by the Building Official Association in response to their twenty twenty building code update. If Rob wants to add anything to that or any questions for Rob, he is online.
Rob, you wanna add anything to that?
Hello, sir. Mr. Mayor and Ray, you guys have described it accurately. It's just a update to the building code to, to reflect the most recent changes in technology.
And we approved this five zero at the first reading?
Yes.
You're supposed to remind us of that. Okay. All right. With that then, do we have any advance public comments on agenda item R two?
No, mayor.
Do we have anyone raised their hand on agenda item R two, Ray?
No, mayor.
I have not received any comment cards. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on agenda item R two? Seeing none, I will close public comment to agenda item R two, opening up for any questions or comments from council. If there are none, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R two?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R two was approved in a second reading by five zero. Okay, this concludes our formal agenda this evening, but I think all of you may be aware of that we are asked to attend a rededication of the community clock at Veterans Park immediately as, as we adjourn this meeting. Hopefully, all of people join us here. And if you can't, with that, stand adjourned. Thank you.